I'm just gonna say what I'd feel comfortable doing tonight for tomorrow's meeting, if you want, is the additional concrete pad. Your fencing and your nets and the painting and the lights. I'd hold off and revisit that at another meeting. The lights could always be ran later, right? They don't have to be put in when this is done, right? They could be.
They can be, yeah.
That's what I'd feel comfortable doing at this point. I don't know how the rest of you felt, but.
So the lights is on the conduit, timers, everything to make it right.
Well, I would get more to get some prices and quotes on that.
And that's not three posts this time?
No.
Uh, it's one free post.
Oh, one free post, okay.
We have three posts from the electric department that we can have. So I would have to find the fourth.
I mean, I would just, I'd have to see the area to get a visual of the lights where they are.
There would be two posts, same lights that are at the pools, same lights that go at the basketball court.
And I don't know if they play pickleball at night. I have no idea on that. Now, I know tennis sometimes.
I think they would be more apt to play at night because it's a lot cooler in the summer.
They might.
But again, I mean, I think they would be ecstatic if they got.
The courts.
A dedicated court, a real court to play on.
Mm-hmm, and the fencing and the nets and posts. I get that. The lights, I would go back and revisit. And the surface stuff, I'd have to learn more on that.
And we might, Tel City Electric might do something with the lights. Uh, we might buy material and they might do the labor for free. So, but the lights could possibly go down to whatever the cost of material is, which is. I don't want to say the number out loud in case we need to get other bids.
So that chain link fence would be all the way around, the whole, both courts?
Uh, yeah, it'd be one enclosure, all the way around. Yeah, both courts would be on one pad.
That's probably the ones at the tennis court, are they?
It is. It's ten foot high, uh, commercial grade fence, same as the backstop fence at Quanis and outfield fence at Quanis. Backstops down at the ball field. It's not coated. It has a top rail and a bottom rail, which will help from people kicking the bottoms or riding skateboards, getting through, um, and then it'll have a mid rail coming off of each corner going ten feet in every direction. So it's not gonna be a mid rail all the way around the court, but that mid rail will strengthen up the whole fence itself.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we present to the county, to the city council for tomorrow night's meeting, the concrete pad for the pickleball court and the chain link fence and the nets and posts at this time. And we will revisit the surface painting and the lights.
Can I make an addition to that? Since we're gonna, since we're gonna remove these, the coating, surface coating on there, we'll have to put a sealer on it. And I would, it might not be a bad idea to budget around eleven hundred dollars or so for that sealer to go over the courts. Does that make sense? So that would, you'd be asking for an additional twenty-six thousand on top of the twenty thousand already allocated for a total of forty-six thousand. Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense.
Do you want to add that to your motion? I'm sorry, I didn't know if you thought about that.
We will add the concrete sealant on there and that will make our total request now of twenty-six thousand. Uh, and we already have twenty thousand appropriated.
Now, to get us two courts fenced, nets, and sealed.
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Want me to make my comment? Want me to re-read that motion?
Second to none.
It's on recording, so we'll get it.
Want me to make my comment second to none there? Any additional discussion? I would just like to say I'm not against the pickleball courts in any fashion. Personally, I would resist just because I'd like to have the more information, time to research it a little more and maybe ask questions about that area where you want it, just to make sure everything's okay there, so.
That's fine.
So, all of you say aye?
Aye.
All of those, aye. Uh, would you pass this to your, or to one, sorry. I didn't know if there was like a rush, you know, that we, I know they have a meeting tomorrow, but.
The rush is mainly if we want to get it done before the end of the year. But I'll look into the lights and the, I'll have the lights quoted and the, uh, surface quote paint before tomorrow's meeting, so. I don't know how this works. I know council has a final say. I don't know if I bring that up to council. I don't know. So I just didn't want you guys to feel like I would step on your toes by presenting it to the council.
If you want to bring light, if you, no rush on the lights or the coating. If you, I would recommend bringing it back to this committee meeting. Our, this is a special one, so our next regular one, what day is that?
September seventh.
So it's September seventh, and then they can go to the council. I mean, even getting stuff scheduled, like I said, that stuff can be done after, so it's not gonna totally mess you up, really. The main thing is getting your pad poured and your fencing and that kind of stuff. The lights, they can put that coating on five years from now if we want them to. And the lights, the same thing, but, you know.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you, I appreciate all the time you put into this and I hope you've got something.
You've done a good job, thank you.
It was a wonderful presentation, so I appreciate it. Uh, public comment, next up, anyone? Larry, sure.
I've got two things I wanted to spend a little bit of time on this evening. One is on the application form and, um, have you adopted an application form for not-for-profits and small businesses?
Yes, you mean like approved that what it would look like, yeah.
Yeah. Mary, you had sent me an email, I think on August the fifth?
Mm-hmm.
So is that the form that you've approved?
I mean, it should be this here. Do you want a copy of it? It shouldn't have changed if it, because this is the final one here. I don't think it's changed since then. Do you, I don't remember any changes occurring to it.
I'm not sure that Baker Tilly went through and made some things, recommendations that they want to change. We discussed it at our last meeting.
I don't think we've changed anything since then, Larry. We might have, but I don't think so.
The version of the draft application received, the application will be. We talked about it at our August third meeting. So I feel what you would have sent to Larry would have been, if he sent it on August fourth, would have been the one, but at that time it probably did not have the dates in it of August thirty-first through September fourteenth, we were gonna.
It had no dates.
It had no dates, that would be correct, because I updated that after that August third meeting.
But it did have a total of twelve questions, I think?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's on five pages. And we did, I did update those dates just this week and have them, these available now for them to pick up in the clerk treasurer's office. Are there online for them to print them off currently? And look at them before we have our meeting next Tuesday with Baker Tilly to go through each of these questions and help anybody that would need some help filling them out.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Kelly, I just.
So, Mary, I'll direct this question to you. So this is being approved and issued by the advisory committee? The council has no input into the application that's gonna be used?
I guess not, no.
I mean, they're welcome to come here like you, like you have been. This meeting is open to the public, so I'm sure if you have suggestions or.
Okay, I've got a lot of questions. Okay. And I didn't make copies of this, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I didn't.
And this is probably, this is just a grammatical thing. On my copy anyhow, the Tel City was not capitalized, it was in small letters, so.
On where at?
At the very top of the page.
It is on the top.
It is on the, okay, okay. I noticed that, um, it says for nonprofit organizations or small businesses, apply for the Tel City American Rescue Plan funding. Organizations must have endured negative economic impacts due to COVID-19. Is that a local requirement, a state requirement, or a federal requirement?
I don't have any more questions.
Baker Tilly had went through that, and I'm sure that's a requirement that they said we had to do. I don't think it's our rule, I think it's what they said that was required. I don't know.
I think it's part of the American Rescue Plan, that it has to be, you have to negatively have been impacted by COVID-19. And you have to show that, because.
And they might be able to explain that at our workshop. Larry, Baker Tilly could probably answer which category you said that that would fall under, but I could be wrong, but.
In the second paragraph, you say expenditures of grant funds by the beneficiary are limited to normal operating expenditures. They will not be awarded for the purpose of capital expenditures or improvements such as building modifications, remodeling, paving, roof replacement, equipment, or other fixtures. Is that a local, state, or federal requirement?
Directly from Baker Tilly, from the American Rescue Plan. That was an email that we received from them that that ought to be included, though those are their words.
Then how are we using money to put in basketball courts, pickleball courts, and buy a, a?
I believe those are normal functions of the city government.
City government.
To fix up parks. And normally, the city does not grant funds to small business nonprofits, is what my understanding was. So they had to structure this based on whatever the requirements were in our rescue plan. And that specific paragraph came directly from Baker Tilly that it needed to be added.
Okay. And you said the application, you now establish the dates on those.
Mm-hmm. August the thirty-first through September the fourteenth at four p.m.
And there's a timeline, Larry? There's gonna be a timeline. And Ange, and I think he actually has it on the city website.
It is.
It is, the timeline.
And I gave it to the Perry County News also to put in the Perry County News. And then also, um, then you reached out, you invited you reached out to the chamber to make sure that they gave the timeline and all the information to the small businesses within the city.
Okay. I notice the, um, there are questions about the application that, um, you email the TCARP@telcity.in.gov. Who monitors and responds to those questions?
I check it every week. I actually checked it today. And we don't really get very many emails in there, but I check it every few days.
This committee has access to it, yes.
On this committee.
The question was, Chris, who monitors and responds to emails addressed to that site? And what I heard is Kelly does that?
I have done it previously, yes. I monitor it regularly and I have responded to, I believe, one or two emails. I can get you the exact amount of, I think twice, there was two.
There's not a lot of emails that come to it, I can tell you that, very few.
I think I've responded to twice, two.
In the next section, you've got please serve one nonprofit organizations or small businesses. What definitions define for me what a not-for-profit organization is that can apply in a small business?
Okay, small business would be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, they have to prove that.
So only 501(c)(3)'s?
That's what, is that what Baker Tilly had said in other emails to us? Because we clarified like a 501(c)(6), I'm making that up.
There are, there are, there are nonprofits, so 501(c)(3).
I believe that's what they had said.
Then I think that should be specified.
And any, that's part of the workshop idea, Larry? So if someone's, you know, wanting to apply, the workshop's recorded, it's on YouTube, they can attend. They can, you know, so if you're a nonprofit and you're interested in applying, you should attend that workshop or watch it if you're gonna, it would help you if you, they would learn right there, yes or no. That's the intention.
And if they have a different type of nonprofit that's not a 501(c)(3) and they found their, you know, Baker Tilly could answer that more specifically to see if their specific type would qualify.
Okay, and define for me small business.
Uh, what was that, under, under a hundred employees?
I didn't bring any.
I have that information.
But I feel like that was under a hundred employees or less, but I'm, I can't stop popping it, Larry. I don't know why I'm bringing that or making it up. I might be making it up, so don't quote me on that. But I'd be glad, I'd be glad to find that out, or we can reach out to Baker Tilly during our workshop and get that answered again then. That's why it's important for anybody wanting to apply, attend this workshop. I wish I could make it a mandatory to apply to answer questions, so no one's like, oh, I didn't know that. That's the idea of the workshop. I wish, I'm not going to, but.
And jumping to, um, I guess question number two. It says provide a copy of your two most recent business entity reports or ten forty schedule C. It's my understanding that the ten forty schedule C only applies to sole proprietorships. So what about corporations or partnerships or LLCs that want to apply?
I know I have other information on this, but I can get you that information. Because I know at one point, I think we included more things. Was this one of the things that Baker Tilly had ever put in?
I think so.
I don't see any other forms. Different things, different entities like that. And I think this is one of the things that they made a correction to and said this is what they were referring to. So I can get that information, please.
The ten forty C only applies to sole proprietorships, so. I mean, it says that at the top of the form, ten forty C. And then you're asking, under question six, um, you're asking for proof of gross revenue for 2019, 2020, and 2021. Does that prevent companies that were only a year or two years old from applying?
What do you mean, like when they would have started? They would, they would have started after?
They can't, I mean, it says provide proof of gross revenue for 2019, 2020, and 2021 if applicable. Okay, so I guess.
Right, so if you weren't in business.
Okay.
They may ask for additional documentation on that to like, to prove that. I know you were talking about specifically was the train group. It's the one that attended our meetings and expressed interest in applying. And they, we posed that question to Baker Tilly, exactly what you're asking. And they said they would, that would be a unique situation that they'd have to work through their application a lot differently.
And they were gonna discuss that at the meeting.
Yes, and that will be discussed at the workshop.
I guess, a question, two questions. Why and who have access to these documents?
Public.
Pardon me?
Their public record.
So they'll be subject to public records regardless?
Yep.
So any business that applies, their tax return will be available to the public?
Yep.
Or review.
Asked, and that's the law, I mean, we don't have a choice on that.
Okay.
That's what we were told, so. Now, Baker Tilly can answer that question. All your questions are good, I've, make sure you ask them again.
Well, or I'll take your notes.
Yeah, because we want to, they're good questions.
How does it know what to address?
Yeah.
Okay. At the bottom of question seven, you've got an amount requested and an amount granted slash loaned. I was of the understanding that these funds could not be loaned, they had to be granted. I'm not sure where I got that, but I read that somewhere.
It's a good question, I don't have the answer to that, Larry.
If you could provide us information that states that.
Kelly, I don't, no, I, I, no, no.
We can write that down, check.
Yep.
This is something absolutely that Baker Tilly has looked over front to back and made all their recommendations. So I'm sure if that, I would think if that was the case, they would have asked to remove that. Or perhaps, if this isn't half their recommendations, maybe they asked to add that. So that's, we'll have to go back and see that. They'll be here at our workshop and that's something that we can, we can talk in about.
Okay. Jumping to question nine, um, how does this nonprofit organization or small business plan, plan to remain sustainable and adapt to future negative economic conditions caused by unforeseen circumstances such as pandemics, disasters, or economic downturns? Again, is that a federal, state, or local requirement?
It's not necessarily a requirement. I think it's us wanting to know if, if we invest and give you, grant you twenty-five thousand dollars, are you just gonna use that, pay for your debt, and close your business up tomorrow?
Right, I want to see sustainability first.
Yeah, I think.
So that's a, that's a local requirement?
I would say it's more of a local, I don't call it a requirement, but it is, I guess you could say it's a requirement, but it's us to know, is we putting good money after bad, or what? I mean, if we're gonna grant someone money, I want to know that they're gonna be sustainable. I mean, I don't want to go in and pay off everyone's debt and then they just walk away either, necessarily. But it's, again, at the end of the day, Baker Tilly's gonna make, go through all these applications. If we get one or one hundred of them. And they're gonna make the favorable recommendations to us that we're gonna in turn get to the council. And the council can choose to tear these up and say, we grant everybody a million dollars, or we grant nobody, you know, whatever. That's all it's gonna be.
Well, we're not gonna grant everybody a million dollars.
I know you're not, you don't have that, but, yeah. But it, at the end of the day, that's, the ball lies in your court.
My personal opinion, for whatever it's worth, and it's not worth much, I don't see where that's relevant to these funds.
And that's fine.
So.
I do refute the idea that these spend the tax dollars and that we absolutely need to make sure that someone has a plan that remains sustainable, will remain a part of our community, you know?
You're gonna get somebody money, I want to know they got a plan.
And I will remind you, you are an advisory council.
Oh, I know, that's what we said, yeah. It's still up to you guys. We're here to help you.
Okay, a question I've got as far as how the funds are used, et cetera. How will they be dispersed? Let's say a not-for-profit requests fifty thousand dollars for a project. How will they receive that money? Will they get it all upfront? Will there be monthly disbursements, quarterly disbursements? Will it be reimbursements to them? Do they have to provide something in order to be reimbursed? How's it going to be dispersed?
That would probably be up to the council, how they'd want to disperse it to them.
And actually, there needs to be a contract with any, um, anybody who says they were rewarded and they're actually rewarded, awarded by the council. They have to, I would believe they would have some type of contract that they have to follow all state federal guidelines. And there has to be follow-up on, um, and reporting on some of these things. And they are to a certain recipient or you're in a top.
So, so in essence, the clerk treasurer will be monitoring these, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Will there be audits required, or only if it passes the federal threshold?
I would require audits, federal and state, is what I've been.
No, that I don't know.
I think, I think a federal audit is only required if it exceeds a certain dollar threshold, which is a fairly high dollar threshold.
If we, if federal audit is anything over seven hundred and fifty thousand. So this will be, when the state board of accounts comes in to audit us, it will be a federal audit.
We've already gotten a federal.
Of this million dollars.
It will be a federal audit for us, but not the not-for-profit.
Correct, it will be for us.
The not-for-profit will sign a contract that's saying that if they break or breach anything, they'll pay the city back. Because if they find something that audit come out of the city, they'll have to look at the contract. That's, that's a protection. I mean, we absolutely want that for the city.
We have not developed that or seen one, developed yet on that agreement, because we haven't got that far yet.
Sure. But all the talks and all the discussions and the webinar and everything happened, and even the county discussions, they had a recommendation that, that.
The contract is basically, in a nutshell, is gonna say, you're gonna use this money to replace lost revenue and dud it, add it, or whatever. Make sure you use it for what you say you're gonna use it for, don't buy a new car with it and be bragging on Facebook. Hey, we just got twenty-five thousand dollars from the cities, we just want to buy a new car, but it should have been towards this. And then their business closes up and that's kind of.
There's kind of a reporting requirement for certain recipients and there's different categories that depending on what the ask is.
Yeah.
And that's required.
I have a lot of concerns about the process, obviously. Okay. I also have, so I'll, um, if I get notified of times and dates, I'll try to attend additional meetings. I have a request to make tonight of this committee. I had Connie's office provided me a, um, listing of city employees. Let me back up a minute. There is one other comment I want to make on the application process. In my opinion, and I've seen an email on this that was directed to another agency, since the city selected the option of putting all the money in line item six, loss, under the loss of revenue from the city. I think by definition, any application that the city funds, because it's gonna be paid out of that line item, meets the definition of loss of revenue. I do not believe that entities have to prove that they've lost revenue, in my opinion, okay? And so that is one thing I would definitely want clarified from Baker Tilly. Now, to get back to my request. Connie's office provided me a listing of city of Tel City employees. And all total, there's about one hundred and twenty-seven. And it's broken down between full-time, part-time, volunteers, and volunteers in training. And then it's broken down by mayor's office, clerk treasurer's office, city hall maintenance, floodwater pumpers, street trash department, cemetery, building zoning, parks and recreation, utility office, water department, wastewater, dispatchers, police, council attorney, fire department, police reserve. I am requesting that a one-time stipend of approximately a thousand dollars be paid to all full-time employees of the city. And that five hundred dollars be paid to part-time employees and volunteers. This would, um, I propose that these payments be made sometime in twenty twenty-three, preferably sometime during the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. It could be during the second quarter of twenty twenty-three. I think that would need to be determined by the clerk treasurer and when these payments could be processed. It would be simply a one-time stipend payment. All appropriate taxes would be withheld, um, FICA match, uh, perf match, whatever's required, would be paid. And I'm asking that a hundred and seven thousand dollars be allocated for this one-time payment for all city employees and volunteers.
When you're talking the match on the Medicare and the perf match, are you requesting that that also would be paid out of the arc of funding?
Yes, yes. And this hundred and seven thousand is, that's a rough estimate. Obviously, it's gonna change depending on how many employees we have at that time period. You know, this list was provided to me, I don't know, a month or so ago, maybe even longer than that. I was gonna talk about it at your last meeting that you canceled. that. I was going to talk about it at your last meeting that you canceled. Or the one before, I guess. I, I, I have a hard time keeping track of your meetings. So anyway, that's my request. I believe our city employees are essential workers. I believe they need to be rewarded for being on the job. And in going through the list, you know, I think you can say, well, yeah, the police department are essential workers, but I'm not sure about the, the flood wall pumpers. Well, I think they're essential workers, you know. Or park and recreation, essential workers. Well, we're going to have the pool of them. Yeah. Water department, utility office, dispatchers. So I, I, personally, I have a hard time finding, differentiating between people on this list that I was provided being not essential to city services. So, and I think, and again, I'm just doing this from memory, Kelly. I can't cite chapter and verse. I believe somewhere in the regulations that I read that city workers are considered essential workers by definition. So, again, I can't cite chapter and verse.
I can't say there's an employee out there in the world that works that's not essential.
Exactly. Exactly, Mayor.
From down at the gas station to someone who works at McDonald's, to someone who works at the grocery store. I mean, you're everybody.
Well, now, Chris, I'll, I'll, I'll differ with you on that. I'm sorry. We don't have to have McDonald's to get.
Those employees have to, they're essential because that's their job. They adopt their job, they can't go to the grocery store to buy food. So, I mean, they become essential in that way, too. But, but they also provide, yeah, food. Some people don't cook and can't cook.
I agree that, you know, this is, these are our benefits or everybody's money. This is all our tax money. And in my opinion, although I'm very appreciative that, you know, the city workers did work through the pandemic, were there any city workers that were laid off or lost any money during the pandemic as far as not getting paid?
No, there was no layoffs whatsoever through the city.
In fact, anybody that got COVID or had, a family member that had COVID or paid when they was off work, or had close contact or quarantined, the list was on. They, they all were. No one, no one lost a dollar personally from their paycheck due to COVID employee debt.
And nowhere in the regulations, and I'll, I'll defy you, define in the regulations where it says that because somebody was paid during COVID, that they're not entitled to these funds.
How do you justify to all the residents of Tel City who also worked through the pandemic? That city workers are more important than themselves who also went to work, or the, the ones who were laid off or?
Now, okay. Nobody would have water to drink without city workers. Nobody. Nobody would be able to flush their toilet without city workers. Nobody would have a way to get rid of their trash without city workers, which if accumulating trash would create an additional public health hazard. I can go on and on and on.
And I could do the same for a lot of other employees that are in the community. So that's where I have a hard time. I can't justify giving a bonus or a one-time stipend to a city employee versus anyone else out in the general public who went to work during the pandemic, who also could be considered essential. And this is also equally the money. This is tax dollars. This is, we're all going to end up in this debt. So to me, I just can't, I just can't justify that one group should get it and then the rest go.
Well, I respectfully disagree with you, Kelly. So that's my request, and.
I think it's a request that this committee wants to vote on it. I think it's fair to either favorable, non-favorable, whatever. It can go to the council who actually, Larry's council member, and then they actually get to decide yea or nay. I think it's the fair way to do it. Larry brought up, but he feels is a very important recommendation. I think it's fair.
And the reason I'm bringing it up now is because in talking with Connie, if we're going to do something like this, it affects salary ordinances. And we're going to be, the council's going to be discussing city budgets and salary ordinances in the very near future. So if we're going to do something like this, it really needs to be done now.
Well, what we can do, Larry, is if this committee decides to vote on yea or nay or whatever, we can have it on the agenda for our special meeting tomorrow night.
No, I don't want to talk about tomorrow night. There's only going to be three people there, Chris.
Yes, sir? Okay.
Yeah. Julie's not going to be there, and John's not going to be there.
Okay. So you want to wait until the September?
September meeting.
For, for this, if we vote on this night, we can, we can wait till then. Okay, fair enough. I'm just being respectful to the council, what you wish, because you are a council member and you have the power to.
I'll be there tomorrow night, but.
I hope so. There's only two, then we're in trouble, Larry. That'll work with.
I know. Maybe, maybe I'll be.
Oh, no, maybe. Can, can you send the police to pick him up? Didn't they do that one time years ago? So is there going to be a recommendation, yea or nay? I mean, I will tell you, I don't know legally if I have to abstain because I'm kind of, in essence, would be voting to give myself a bonus. And I don't like that. I.
And I'm the same way because I'm elected official. I don't want to have to.
So we can vote and we can abstain. It could still pass or not pass. It could still go to the council.
Or you could make a motion to recommend that maybe elected officials are, I mean, it's up to you. I like, I like the beginning of that. This is for someone like that.
Tell you what, I'll make a motion to send it to the city council with a, look for the word. Non-favorable or favorable, because Connie both had abstained. It's just make a recommendation to send it to the council with a, what's the word I'm looking for here? Not unanimous, ununanimous, or? It's not favorable, it's not, it's not unfavorable and it's not favorable. It's neither one. Because if we abstain and you vote yea or nay, is it passed really? I don't know. It's kind of a mess. Do you know what I mean? Say, we need to make a recommendation to the council to let them decide one way or another, yea or nay. And it's not favorable. And that's fine. We'll put that as part of your thing. And.
So what's your motion?
Does this, my, my motion would be to send it to the council for their consider, for, I guess their consideration. But personally, I don't like the idea. I will tell you personally, I don't like the idea, but I have to abstain anyways. That's my personal opinion.
Now, because we, this board will meet. This board won't meet until after the council meets in September.
Right. We need to get it on there for Larry's September thing. I think it's, we owe that to Larry, a council member, to do it. Let them decide.
So we just send it to them and?
Without a recommendation?
Without a, without a recommendation.
Okay. I'd like to be on our, without, not for this, not for the.
I feel the same way. So, but.
I think, I feel it's going to have to be up to the council.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not crazy about it, Larry, in, in all due respect. I'm just not. Personally, my gut tells me it's just, while I appreciate our employees, we have the best employees you could ever ask for. I, I do feel that way. And that's why Connie is working hard for salaries to, to reflect that. But I feel this money could be better spent improving parks, the quality of life of all residents, not just one employee and their family. I, that's just my thoughts, but. Did I say that bad?
More discusses of the council meeting, Mayor, but.
And that's fine. Council, I will be glad to introduce it and sit back and let you guys hash it out and go for it. That's, that's.
No, I'll, I'll respond to the comment that you just made.
Oh, you respond it if you want.
Okay, I'll, I'll respond to you. You're right. We're using this money and doing a lot of good things with the parks, et cetera, et cetera. None of that would be operating without the city employees, period. This guy right here wouldn't be here. Okay?
I agree. I agree. But that's why our salaries are trying to adjust and reflect.
And their work and COVID still exists.
Oh, I know.
My granddaughter, her fear of practice was canceled in my, because of Pat Jarburg and with COVID.
I had it back, I've had it twice. So I would exist. Not fun.
And so has some of our council members.
Yeah, we just keep racking it up.
Still there.
I, I want to ask a question, Larry, because I don't, I don't remember what, I don't have in front of me what we gave you or anything. But just, and I hate to pick on Brandon here, but I did use Brandon as an example. He was not employed with us during the pandemic. So do we give him that thousand dollars?
In my mind, when the payment is made, that's.
Is who we get it, no matter if they were employed with the city at the time in twenty twenty. Okay. Okay.
And I can't remember. This is.
I know. And I, I felt to go to, to get what we gave you. We would have to go back over this just to double check.
People that would get it would be, you're trying to, I can't remember the name of this.
Winnipeg.
Can I say something? I mean, I, I, I respect the fact that you want to look up to the employees and see, the city employees, but also look at the other people that didn't get a bonus that's not qualified for. I mean, we were out a hundred and fifty people. I worked in a factory at the time. I'm retired now. When our shift was down a hundred and fifty people, I had to work twice as hard, basically. And I'm not getting no bonus from it. But, you know, I mean, a lot of these people that are not qualified in this bonus, they are having to work twice as hard. And they're getting, you know, and there's a lot of false missing, you know, false, what do you call it, call-ins and stuff like that, you know, to, to an extent. You know, people were afraid. Well, I was sick. I, I wouldn't got tested or something like that. So I have to cover this person. So I work twice as hard and I, I'm not saying that it's a bummer. But I do respect what he's saying. But I, I have more respect for what yours is, you know, I mean.
Okay. I'm just going to go ahead and, I, I don't know if I can legally, I don't, personally, I don't, if it would be approved, I wouldn't want the money from the council. So there, I wouldn't take it. I would donate it back to something. I don't care what, but I don't need it.
So you exclude yourself?
What? I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a lawyer. Go to law school. But, you know, I, I can tell you what, the only thing I know we can do is make a recommend, I will make a recommendation to allow the council to make a decision. It is not favorable. It is not, on my opinion, but with that, but. So, does that even?
Motion that it is not favorable, but to go to the council for their own decision?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mayor, seconded by Connie, for an unfavorable recommendation for this bonus that ultimately had to the council.
Right. I don't know if I can legally do it because, again, I don't want the thousand dollars or however much it is. It's not important to me. It's more important that money goes to, when I look at the kids at the ballpark, or the splash pad, or the sports complex, or the senior center, or, or the, the American Legion of BFW, I'd rather give them that thousand dollars right there and be done with it. To me, it means more to them than it would to me. I didn't hurt during the pandemic. I had a job. I, I mean, I came to work every day and wasn't laid off. I still got my paycheck. I didn't, I mean, I worked over, but that's part of this job. You're going to work over. It's that salary position.
Okay, so all favorable say aye.
Sorry, I ranted.
That's okay. I, motion passes for an unfavorable recommendation to the council, three to zero. Anything else? Any other? Did you have anything else? Larry?
I just wanted everyone to know that we did receive our second payment of our money here now in August. And I did move it to the savings account that I have set up for this. So it'll earn a little bit of interest.
Okay, great. Okay, so German is the last thing. There's nothing eventually to be presented. I want to hand it over to the legislature.
So move.
Seconded by Mayor, seconded by Connie, all favorable say aye.
Aye.